Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 14th meeting 2021 of the Columbia Heights Public Schools Board of Education. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks again for coming, everybody, and those who are watching with us at home. So glad that you could join us tonight. We'll begin with a roll call, please.
Grandland, here. Mueller, here. Lewis, here. Severson, here. Palmer, here. And Superintendent Stenbik, here.
All right, thanks. Columbia Heights' mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And our core values are community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We'll move on to the agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence, and we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to move that one forward?
So moved. Mary?
Mary. Second?
Second. Molly?
Second. Molly, discussion.
I have an item. Can we please remove the personnel report from the consent agenda?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Let me just type that in there. Can I, can we, do we make a motion on that first and then have a discussion, Don? So you're making a motion to remove the person, to amend the agenda? You're making a motion to amend the agenda by removing the personnel report from the consent agenda?
Yep.
And then we would approve the agenda with the personnel report separated? Do you want to make that, that's the motion you're making? That's Loriann's motion. Can I get a second on that?
A second.
Okay. Discussion. All right. We'll do a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Just got to type this all in, sorry. All right. We'll move on to announcements. September 21st, Tuesday at 6:00 PM, there's a school board professional development on Zoom. September 28th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there's a regular school board meeting in the community room. October 12th, which is another Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there is another regular school board meeting here in the community room. Move on to correspondence. Superintendent Stenbik, do you have any correspondence tonight?
Chair Severson, there's no correspondence at this time.
Just someday, maybe someday. We're going to keep asking that question. Hopefully not. Hopefully not. Communication to the board, all right. The moment you've all been waiting for. At this time, any citizens or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks and ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. And if you see on here, if you look at the different fronts and backs, you're going to see our data privacy rules. We also are limiting people to things. Three minutes of time, and we will stop you. Chair, sorry, Vice Chair Mueller has her fancy Apple timer, or maybe it's an Android timer, I don't know. But we will stop you at three minutes. So just note that when you come up here, kind of think about your remarks, take a breath, and then share them succinctly with us. We will move on to the consent agenda. And that includes now, we've removed the personnel reports, so it includes a school board minutes from the September 28th regular school board meeting and the September 21st, oh no, sorry, that's the announcements. The August 10th, 24th regular school board meetings and the August 17th school board work session. And as part of the consent agenda, we are also accepting the resignation of Board Member Hala Samurai. A motion to move forward with the consent agenda.
So moved.
Loriann?
Second.
Second, Laura. Discussion. I have a point of discussion on this one. As we are approving the resignation of Board Member Samurai, we will talk about Board Member appointment, the process during board topics. Everyone's good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. We'll move on to the Personnel Report. A motion to approve the Personnel Report.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Molly? Discussion. All right. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Aye, abstained.
All right, motion carries. We will move on to the discussion reports and information items, and we'll begin with reports from members of the board. Hold on one second while I finish this note. We'll move on to reports from members of the board, and we'll start with, looks like I got Molly's name here first.
Of course. Sorry. It's fine. So since we met last, I did attend convocation online and the picnic for all staff, as well as the breakfast that we were able to attend, meeting the new staff, which was really nice to just be able to put a face with the new staff that are here and to be able to be in this room and enjoy that. Also attended a couple of really exciting football games and some volleyball games. And that's it, I think. Sure. Thanks.
All right. We'll move on to Laura.
Hi, it has been a busy couple of weeks. I also attended the new staff breakfast, the convocation. I got to go over to Valley View, yay. That was actually a lot of fun to be with the teachers over there. Yeah, I mean, I mean, great, it's great to be, you know, in the big thing, and we're all dancing, and, and, but it's also great to sit over there and then watch everybody have lots of fun with the web, live web streaming. That was a blast. I also attended the picnic and then the open house over at the high school, which was a little bit different this year, which was kind of, which was kind of fun. I attended the 916 monthly board meeting. And I also had a, a meeting with the new superintendent, Dr. Val Ray Bowe, who was over at 916. And we had lots of discussion about what we were doing here in Columbia Heights and, and she was seeking kind of input on how, where we could collaborate more. That's, there was a lot more in there. I just kind of boiled it down. Thank you.
Was that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I could go on and on about each one of those things, but we're going to, we're going to cut that short.
For the sake of time, I will amend all my comments. All right. Mary? That was like no look. I was looking at Molly when I said Mary. Sorry, that was tricky.
Nice, nice work. You're getting it. So I attended, I also attended some back-to-school activities. I went, I was also at the breakfast, unfortunately missed convocation. I also had an opportunity to attend orientation both at Valley View and Columbia Academy, which worked out really slickly. Kudos to all the staff who were working really hard to make those things as seamless as possible, especially after coming back really fully en force after 18 months home. This last weekend, I got a chance to, you know, be out with the community. I spent a lot of Saturday volunteering at the first annual art, in the park at Kodiak. And then since our last meeting, I've had several conversations with parents, staff, and students regarding returning to school, staffing changes, and virtual heights.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to Loriann. No, I, we got Molly. We got Molly, we got Lori, yep, Loriann.
You're going around the circle here.
Thank you. Yep, since our last meeting, I also attended the new staff breakfast, and so that was a lot of fun to get to know everybody. I liked the new games this year. So that was fun.
Yeah, that was fun.
Also attended convocation, very different format, but that was still great. And the, and the all-staff picnic, it's a lot of fun to see people in a more social setting and outdoors. Everybody was excited. I attended the chair meeting prior to this meeting and have also been able to take in some swim meets both in-person, which is great to see swim meets where the swimmers are actually competing against other schools in the same pool. So that's been a couple of seasons since we've done that. And then also still being able to see some live streaming. So kind of the good that comes out of the bad was 15 minutes ago, or 15 minutes before the meeting, watching my daughter swim a race. So great, and appreciate the technology staff and everybody who's making streaming available too. That's it for me.
All right. I was also able to go to the Scalyon Heights New Teacher Breakfast, and I did also appreciate the new game. It was way less stressful. Went to the, got to go to the, on the bus ride, which is kind of like a life dream realized for me, the new teacher bus ride. I always sort of had a little bit of envy that John got to do that, and worth the price of admission, just to be the board chair right there. And then was able to join them for the lunch over at Virgin Hall, which was really fun, getting to know a lot of the teachers with the more time. I was able to go to the convocation and the picnic that followed, thanks to everybody. I know there's a ton of people who worked really hard to get that picnic off the ground, and it's amazing how quickly that many people get fed. I mean, it's hundreds of people. And boom, it's, it's amazing how, it's, it's smooth work. So thank you to everyone. Been able to attend a football game, and there was a booster tailgate, just for the public. You don't need to be a parent or anything. The boosters host a tailgate in the parking lot, so obviously a clean, wholesome time. People are welcome to come. Went to some girls tennis matches. Also got to attend virtually with the AMSD Association, which Walton School Districts, bright and early on Friday morning, and had meetings with Superintendent Stenbik and actually Member Grandland. We had a phone meeting. So that is me. Superintendent Stenbik?
Yes, we were very happy to welcome back students to school last week. We do continue to see local COVID case rates, and as we're following all of the guidance, the school board policy on masks and face coverings truly does help keep staff and students in school and learning. We're able to keep our schools up and running because people are wearing masks and many are vaccinated. If that were not the case, we would have many students and staff in quarantine. As predicted, the school year with both in-person learning and virtual heights brings unique challenges. The staff and admin team are collaborating to work out kinks and settle into a routine. Later this week, Principal Nguyen, Don Hoyam, and I will be meeting to discuss the logistics for high school students to apply to be a student representative to the school board, including the methods for getting out the word to all of the students, application process, and the board selecting. Before this meeting, I was able to go up to the back of the building and check out the tennis, girls tennis. They weren't quite competing yet, but warming up. It was fun to see and walk around and see soccer and football practices happening too. And lastly, I had conversations with Chair Severson, Member Grandland, and Member Lewis. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you so much. All right, we'll move on to the opening of school buildings updates. And so we'll be presented with information on the opening of schools and activities at each school. We have a host of Highlanders on this one. Director Stunkel, Principal Wayne, Principal Burkis, Principal Jenke, Principal Sasek, and Principal Coleman. And I think we have, is Principal Burkis, is he zooming in now also?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Very good. Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik, I'm very pleased this evening to be here with all of our principals and to let you know about the opening of the school year, which opened last week. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. This evening, you will hear all of our district's core values represented as we start off the year strong and robust, and so happy to see the students in the school buildings. Community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation, I think you'll hear throughout with our relationship with students and also with our colleagues. This is informational, this is an informational update. There are no governance questions. I'll start off with community education. Our adult enrichment programs have started. Classes are onsite, on Zoom, and hybrid option. In fact, this, this yoga picture was just taken two hours ago in our activity room, and there's a little iPad in there zooming in also participants. Our adult basic education program, that's located at 4111 Central with our Metro North ADE program. They're offering onsite, hybrid, and distance learning options. Our community ed programs with early childhood, our ECFE classes just began yesterday. All of the classes are onsite with the exception of one Zoom class. Our pre-K3 program, our, all of our programs are onsite. These are two, the picture is two young children in our three-year-old class. And our mini adventures program, that's our childcare program for three- to five-year-olds, is ongoing. With our school age programming, Adventure Club began on the first day of school, and Encore starts at the start of October. And with that, I'll hand it over to our, our new high school principal.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenbik. Can, it looks like my face is not showing up, and you're getting a little bit of a blur there. Is that true?
Yeah, we can't see. We just see kind of a, there we go. Oh, no, we're back in the boardroom.
Well, they say I have a face for radio. I don't know what that means. We're just going to go with it.
Just do your best. Thank you.
You'll see me plenty. We were real excited to get Columbia Heights High School off to a great start this year. As, as you know, I'm new, and so it was all new to me as well, but I definitely appreciate the warm welcome. Our staff had a great kickoff. We had some great breakfast and some time to build some community and touch the walls and feel what it feels like to be back in a school again and know that it was okay. So we had our work week. We, we took one of Ms. Stenbik, Superintendent Stenbik's ideas from an activity that she shared with the new teachers. So we did that and had a lot of fun building catapults. And so that was a good time. And yeah, then we had some family nights for our new families coming in. It was just a time for them to ask questions, and our deans and assistant principals kind of walked them through what Columbia Heights looks like and answered questions and welcomed them. And we followed that with a ninth and 10th grade orientation, which was, was interesting because typically you just have your ninth graders there, and they would be going through their, their schedules and, and, and go through all their classrooms and kind of get a feel where their lockers are. But because our 10th graders weren't in the building the year before, we decided to do the same thing. So it was a bit larger than we're, than we normally do, but it worked out well, and we had a lot of fun. Our key, our link crew was very instrumental in this process. So these are some upperclassmen that volunteer their time to, to help our new kids come in and adapt to our school. Then we met with our grade levels, our, our classes, the deans, assistant principals that are assigned to each grade level met, and I met with them as well, and Jake Henderson, to talk about opportunities they have and just expectations for the year. Now, we're, we're pretty large this year. I mean, I don't know anything different than what we are for me, but according to some historical data, 1,123 as of today, I believe, is, is a large, is a large group for the high school compared to years past. I put vans, 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 and buses on there because we are, we did turn the parking lot in, or the loop, bus loop, into, back to a bus loop and asked that our parents for PM drop-off and pickup that they would not access the loop. And so it took a couple days of observation, and we decided that we'd want to keep it a little bit safer from what, what it looked like to what it is now. Feeling really, really good about it. Our parents stepped up and responded in a, in a great way. I talked to Michelle over at the elementary, and she offered up the parking lot. So our kiddos are feeling safer, and our parents feel probably a little bit, there's just a lot less congestion. So it's safer for everyone. It's a win-win. Our kids have agreed to wear masks, and they'd rather be wearing masks than be at home, for the majority of them, I would say. Great compliance in that, as Superintendent Stenbik said, our kids are doing a great job. And you know, the, we're retraining just to be in school again, let alone remember to wear your masks. And I probably hand out about 35, 40 masks a day, which isn't that bad. And then we have lots of reminders, but kids are, have always been great about it. We've been encouraging our kids to use the courtyard and our teachers as well. So we're, we have kids, probably about 50 to 60 kids per lunch, maybe, maybe more, 50 per lunch, all three lunches, that are using the courtyard versus, to eat their lunches versus the lunchroom. And also, we've had some science classes and art classes out there using the courtyard as well to, to do some teaching. Activities, clubs, and athletics were, as, as Superintendent Stenbik said, I mean, you go out there tonight, we've got tennis going on, matches, practice. We have teams that are already on the bus away for multiple events. The football game had a huge crowd on Friday night, and it was a great, great win for, for the Highlanders. But just, it's, we're just in full swing now, and so it feels like what a high school should feel like. And then with that comes our student spirit. And so it's exciting to have all of our kids competing and being in activities and clubs and just taking advantage of all the things that we have to offer. And so today was one of the first days. It just, it felt really smooth. The whole day felt good, in, in my opinion. And so that just is a good sign to me that people are starting to settle in, adults included, myself included, all the kids. You know, and it's, we're, we're not claiming we're perfect. We got a lot of things still that we want to get done, but I'm feeling good about where we're at right now.
With that, we'll have our Principal Burkis with Columbia Academy.
Yes, thank you. Chair Severson, Superintendent Stenbik, and members of the board. I'm pleased to be here to talk a little bit about the beginning of the year at Columbia Academy. It's been so great to see our kids come back. Some of them that we have seventh and eighth graders we had seen for a year and a half. Takes a moment when some of them say, wait a second now, you are, wow. The amount that kids grow, the way they changed over time. Lots of fun to see them. But we did have a lot of new things this year that we tried as a result of some good conversations over this past year about how we could do things a little differently. That included open house conferences as opposed to the great big open house that we used to do and have about 3,000 people in two hours go through the building. We did it over two different days. We had conferences for individual families. I think it went much better in terms of really being able to connect with each family. Star teacher, they had time to sit down and meet. We had also, for the first time, an orientation day for students who are new to the building. And for us, like the high school, that was two grade levels full. It was a really good way for us, I think, to make sure that students knew how to get around the building by the end of the day, and be, and be able to open lockers, do all those kinds of things that just really lowers the stress level for them. In addition to that, we were able to talk to our students and continue to talk about it, the opportunities beyond the school day. That includes sixth graders participating in athletics for the first time at Columbia Academy. So we're very excited about all those things that we're doing new and that have gone very well. With that, though, I think just the highlight really for me over this past few days has been just to see the excitement in our students, the energy that has returned to our building, but also just to have our very strong staff there to greet them, to make connections with them each and every day. It's been a joy to watch. Kind of like Mr. Principal Nguyen said, we are settling in, and today was our smoothest day yet. So for us as well, it was great to see that those routines are being set and students are able to, to settle in. We also have an increase in our staff diversity, including Spanish-speaking Latinas in our front office that has helped greatly with an influx of students from countries that speak Spanish. So we've offered, I think, a greater, better customer service than perhaps we have in a long time in multiple languages. So again, oop, I got the sixth grade after that opportunities. You can see I'm excited about that. First game last Saturday. It does include sixth through eighth graders. We have our first girls soccer team that includes, at Columbia Academy, includes sixth through eighth graders. We're making the most of that as well. But it's been a great start. It's just been really fun to see this great group. That's our equivalent to link crew, our web leaders, greeting our students, greeting parents, just helping us out a great deal throughout the last two weeks.
Principal Sasek with North Park School for Innovation.
Good evening, everyone. It was a really exciting beginning of school, you know. It's like, I, I don't, I don't think we've ever had, had a bad start, any of us. They're all wonderful, but I think this one was, was really extra special because we had been out for so long. And, and, and the adults especially, we were just craving the energy of the kids, and have we ever gotten it? And if you look on the right there, that is, that is a courageous Mrs. Landry kindergarten teacher. She chose the first possible option for doing our sustainability program. And that was the first day of school at 8:30. And that's Mrs. Howsworth, teaching kids about how the biodigester works and why we have it. They also went to stations with West Neutran in the Courtyard Garden and West Amara's in the STEM Lab, so that they could start learning about the closed loop that we've created to support our sustainability education at North Park. And I shared that, that photo with the company that designs and builds the biodigester, and they actually asked me to, to check for releases on all the kits because they want to use it as, for marketing purposes. But it was, it, it was a wonderful way to start the year, and those three teachers I mentioned earlier committed their first four days to making sure that every child at North Park went through the program. And the rest is like, you know, honestly, it's like, we, we've had this, this building for, for more than, than a year now, but it, it was opening a brand-new building and doing things like realizing that we had 55 years to tweak the old cafeteria. So when we were running really behind the first couple of days, we realized that we have a totally different building. And much like Principal Nguyen and Principal Burkis have shared, today and yesterday, we're really smooth and everything was on time. And it's just, it's fantastic to be back. So thank you, everyone.
And Principal Coleman with Valley View Elementary.
Chair Severson, Superintendent Stenbik, members of the board. Valley View has had a great start of the year. In the 23 years I've been in education, I think I've been, haven't been more excited for a start of the year. And it's because we, we have students back in our buildings, we have all of our staff back. And some of the first things we did, not only with our students, as you see here, but with our staff, was concentrated on hopes and dreams, you know, that the pandemic will be ending at some point in time, and what are our hopes and what are our dreams? And then I love the little one in the middle, I am unique because, and we're all unique. And I think we're really stressing that because we're, we're relearning each other as we start the year. We've, we've missed some of our kids for almost a year and a half. So bringing, bringing them all together and being together has been just amazing. So it's, it's just, like I said, we're, we're off on a good foot. As my fellow colleague principals have said, we're kind of relearning how to do school, and it's not just the students. There's many nights I've been going to bed at 8:15 because I'm exhausted, and I forgot how, how hard it is. But as I was walking around the building and with staff, and you can see, this is our opening, opening Monday with staff. We're spread out and back together again. And it was so apropos, I walked into Mr. Chow's music class, and they're singing all together again, and I couldn't pass that up. I had to take a picture of that because it was just the most beautiful thing. The, the students are back together, they're welcoming each other, and then he's singing. So that was one of the highlights of my days, and I think probably one of the highlights of our students' days too, is, is we're back together. Kristen, would you advance to the next slide? We, we're really focusing on building those relationships. As the other principals had said, our orientation sessions were absolutely hit. We, we implore that Superintendent, Superintendent Stenbik allows us to do this again next year because we really started some deep-seated relationships in those times. Families were brought in. We had a half an hour to work with them, to get to know them, show them their learning space, really take the time to understand what they want for their children, and it was beautiful. And you can see in some of the pictures here, they're either leaving or coming. And then also being able to sit down and go through some of the forms that we have that are so critical. Um, and then also being able to sit down um, and go through some of the forms that we have that are so critical to their, their, their learning, you know, tech forms, educational benefits. And we could sit down with parents hand in hand and start helping them fill them out because they can be confusing. So we are off um, on a great foot, a great start. And then you can see here are some pictures of our classrooms that they are ready and going. Um, I said in my video to to students today in the all school morning meeting, one of the highlights of my entire week was walking down the halls and listening to the morning meetings and what was happening and the the chants and the introductions and the, the names being shared. It was, it felt good again, it felt normal. Um, and we're at home and and now let the learning begin.
Thank you. And Principal Jenke with Highland Elementary.
Good evening, Chair Severson, Superintendent Stendig and members of the board. Um, not to be redundant with what the other principals have said, but we also really enjoyed the orientation sessions for our students and some of the things that we did at Highland. Um, finding your classroom, dropping off supplies, signing up for conferences, signing up for parent view, collecting lunch forms, and then the opportunity for one-on-one testing and some other fun activities that the teachers had planned in the classroom. Um, I'm, I want to talk about some kind of safety precautionary or highlights that we started. And I know this is consistent at all three elementary schools, but we started grab and go breakfast um, this year in the elementaries, which is working great. So thanks. Big thanks to Maggie and the cooks and all the support staff for helping. Um, grab and go breakfast has really increased the number of students eating. Um, they, breakfast and lunch are free for all students and they don't need to put in their PIN number. So the lines are going really quick and they're able to get their breakfast and off they go to class. So they're not intermingling with a lot of different students from different rooms. So we're able, if we would have a COVID case, able to contact, contact trace quickly. Um, we also um, really are excited to have our students back in the building. Um, it's just amazing um, to see how happy they are to be back at school. We don't really get many complaints about the masks. I know that they um, want to be in school, they love spending time with their friends. And it's been a pretty easy transition back for most students into the classrooms. So it's exciting for our staff, but also for our students. The beginning of the school year is really a time um, for practicing rituals and routines. So the last few days, we've been really working on as both um, Principal Coleman and Principal Sasek said, developing relationships with students, taking time to get to know them, um, who they are and being able to really go slow to go fast and be ready to start um, getting into at hard into academics when we're finished with our testing. That should happen pretty quickly.
Thank you to the principals. In addition to this, we also have a small online program, which we call Virtual Heights. And we are glad for the leadership of two teachers that are facilitating that learning for the students through our Virtual Heights program. So as you can see, our twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year is off to a great start and we are all committed to heighten up for our students.
All right. Thank you so much to everyone who presented. Um, board members, any questions or comments? None, for real? I, I mean, I guess I have a couple. One would be, I wish I was at the catapult, catapult thing. I don't know what that is, but that sounds fun.
I have photographs.
I'm, I'm hoping it was like the pumpkin one where you get to launch a, no, not that, probably not that.
Ping pong balls.
Oh, ping pong balls. All right. No, in all seriousness, thank you so much for all that you're doing um, for, for the kids and for the staff. And we're, we're thankful for getting the school year off and for getting, getting the kids back in the buildings with their teachers and their peers and the other staff members. It's huge. Blessing to the kids and and we're thankful for all your service. Side note, i- is it possible that at some point we as a board could get to see the sustainability tour at North Park?
I'll let Principal Sasek respond.
I don't know if the other board members would even want to. It'd be cool to see the biodigestor that we've heard so much about.
That, that could definitely be arranged.
Okay, all right. Sweet.
I mean, then at that point, aren't we going to ask Mr. Coleman if we can see the grand, like the cool red boiler at Valleyview?
The train boiler?
Yeah, the train, the train boiler. We call it the train boiler.
Probably a little less exciting, but we could pretend we were at Hogwarts, maybe.
It's the little things, Manny.
Other comments? Great. Well, thank you so much all for, for joining us tonight. We're thankful again to have you here. Feel free to log off if your supervisor okayed that. And if you're watching and you think, man, it's rude if I leave right now, it's not. It's okay if you, if you leave at any point, we won't judge you. Um, all right, pay levy twenty twenty preliminary, Ryan Hennickens.
Thank you, Chair Severson, members of the board and Superintendent Stendig. Um, I, I'm kind of disappointed that the principals didn't stay on for this. Um, and, and we can definitely get you in the boiler room if you really want.
Thanks.
Uh, thanks. This evening, uh, uh, you'll hear a lot about the levy in the coming months. Um, this is the, the first uh, um, step in that process and and I think everybody's fairly familiar with this. So this evening I'm uh, presenting on the uh, twenty twenty-one uh, payable twenty-two preliminary levy. So the, in the reality of that is it's fiscal year twenty-three. So um, if, m- most of you have heard this a lot before, um, that, you know, in finance world, we really work in three years. We're, we're in fiscal year twenty-two. We're still working on the audit for fiscal year twenty-one. And I'm providing information and working in fiscal year twenty-three. So um, it definitely gets confusing sometimes, what year are we in? Um, but uh, this evening is, is this first process in the levy is, it's a, it's a preliminary snapshot of where we're at um, with the dollars that we levy. And um, and in this first process, it's about um, uh, presenting the board where we're at and asking for the maximum. Um, most of you are familiar with what that means. It's as the levy changes. So just to give you an example, as I get to the presentation here in a minute, um, we've had four changes in the levy from the state uh, since the levy came out on the eighth and it's the fourteenth. So we've had a lot of changes already and our dollar amount has changed each time they made that change. So um, the reason we ask for that maximum is that we, it's incredibly important for us um, uh, to capture those changes. If we, if we prove a, a specific dollar amount um, or go for a specific dollar amount, we don't capture those changes up or down. Um, I should have started this right away. Um, but I was just so excited about levy, I just couldn't wait to start talking. So again, our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all along, all succeed. And our core values um, for, for the levy and and what that brings to the district and where that comes from, it's really all of our core values. And as I stated, um, it's, it's a, um, this is an informational item now. Um, it'll be brought back as an action item on September twenty, September twenty-second meeting, um, in which we'll be asking uh, the school board to prove the maximum. Um, and then I want to stop sharing and I want to actually pull up the document and kind of steps through um, where we're at right now briefly. I don't want to go, it might be a, a little much. This is the best way that I could uh, figure to show it uh, this evening. And just kind of break down what the levy looks like and and where we're at. Um, so you can see that um, we have some different categories uh, in uh, first column is the description of those categories. Second column, we're looking at what the certified payable twenty twenty-one levy was. And then in the third column, the preliminary payable twenty-two, which is, is really what we're focusing on now, and then the difference. Um, and so we, we start up in the top in our, in our general operations or, you know, our equity, our local optional um, revenue that are referred to as lore sometimes, uh, that referendum, um, it's like our operating referendum. Um, we have our abatement adjustments. Um, so the reimbursement from the county for backs taxes, that's where that fits in, uh, the TIF adjustments. Um, so we have that tax increment financing. So you hear about them so sometimes when companies come in, uh, um, you know, Medtronic's in one right now and they build their headquarters and a big facility um, in the, in this, this, the um, city will give them um, you know, basically a, a tax abatement, um, you know, to a certain point in time. Um, so that's a factor, a factor in uh, our total dollar amount that we receive. So in that general operations, you can see that we, we see a, a fairly significant drop in our levy. And um, you know, I've talked about the adjustments and we've already had four since this process started. Um, and one of the things of note is a lot of these adjustments in the beginning are really adjustments as it's related to errors in their report. Um, I think uh, some of you recall last year, Director uh, Sunstrom talking about a, a new, a new finance system at the state. Um, they overhauled it. Um, we're still kind of reeling on the, that new system uh, and some of these changes. Um, and so one of the, one of the things that we know is a factor uh, in the system right now is that, is our net tax capacity for the community is actually lower than what our net, net tax capacity is in reality. So that number being lower, it's included in a lot of the different formulas that factor into these numbers and um, not all of them. Um, but there are many that it's factored in and it's significantly lower than what it should be. So um, I do anticipate that our levy, when you see the total dollar amount uh, discrepancy from last year to this year, um, I do anticipate that to significantly change over the coming months here. And again, that's just another reason, as I was talking, that we approve the maximum. So as those changes uh, corrections are made, that we capture those. Um, so then the next area, the general designated, so the um, different items that we can uh, receive levy dollars for uh, integration, uh, reemployment is something that we can, um, sort of like districts, actual unemployment costs, just things that we can levy for. Um, and you know, that's one of those things that it's a guess. Um, you know, we, we anticipate what our expenses are going to be and, and then we um, and we receive those levy dollars and then there's adjustments on the actuals. Um, safe schools for security uh, within the schools. Um, we also levy for intermediate districts as well. So number nine, safe schools is, is for uh, intermediate nine sixteen. Um, and I, I don't want to go too much into detail on all of this because, like I said, you guys are going to see this a lot, but I just kind of wanted to step through um, some of the things. So one of the items, operating capital, number twelve. Again, I just want to keep reiterating as, as things change. I know you guys are familiar with this, but not necessarily everybody is. Um, original levy run, the original two levy runs this year, operating capital is heavily factored on the age of the buildings. That's one of the factors. And obviously we all know that our buildings are very old. So that brings in additional operating revenue for us. And um, the age of the buildings, for whatever reason, wasn't showing on their formula in any of, anybody's levy across the state. So they were.
Broadcasting?
They fixed that um, it recently and uh, and it brought up our, our operating capital significantly. So it's, it's much less difference now. But again, a reminder that that net tax capacity is still, still a factor in some of these formulas and it's lower than what it probably will be as we get closer to um, the actual certification of the levy. Um, next, no, the net tax capacity heavily um, factors into long-term facility maintenance. So you can see a very drastic difference in long-term facility maintenance, the four hundred and sixty-three thousand plus. Um, so I, I do anticipate that to adjust um, a lot. Um, and those, that's, that's a, you know, deferred maintenance um, items for, for the district. Um, and again, you see the lease levy, uh, again, uh, we, we lease levy for uh, nine sixteen um, as well as we're a member of nine sixteen. Um, community service, uh, this doesn't change a lot from year to year. Uh, it did change this year and the primary factor for that is it's, it's based on the census. So twenty twenty, we had a new census. And uh, um, so we can, we can see that there, there's an increase in that area. So um, and then with, with early childhood, um, I think in that area, we'll see it, we'll see an adjustment there as well. Um, because there's some factors um, in that area that'll adjust and, you know, partially that's, that's uh, has to do with student enrollment and anywhere student enrollment um, was obviously from last year with COVID. Uh, we have our capital projects levy and we see a drastic decrease there. Again, that's a primary factor in that tax capacity. So um, I anticipate that number to go back up. Um, debt service, uh, not, not a lot of adjustments or changes there. Um, we, we just typically won't unless we're adding additional debt or debt is coming off the books. Um, so that's, that's very stable for us. You don't see a lot of changes there. Um, so you see our total proposed levy, preliminary levy at this point is, is uh, one point two five million less than the previous year. Um, so obviously that's a, you know, kind of a scary number uh, to, to see uh, one point two five less a million in, in revenue. But again, this is, this is the beginning and there'll be a lot of adjustments and we know there's some errors in the levy. I did get confirmation from the state uh, uh, yesterday, yeah, yeah, last night, um, confirming that um, there was indeed a net tax capacity error for Anoka County. Um, and so, and they have yet to repair that error. They're waiting for new data from the county. So um, this is, this is the preliminary rev- levy where we're at. And again, at the September twenty-second meeting, uh, I'll be coming to the board uh, asking for the maximum. So again, as this adjusts over time and then we, we certify the levy uh, this winter, that will be able to capture all of those adjustments. With that, I will stop sharing. And ask if there's any questions.
Any questions?
Would it be possible to get that in our board packet?
Absolutely.
That grid that he, specifically the grid. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I, I definitely anticipated that you would want that. Uh, it's, it's, it's hard to show on the screen. It's a lot of numbers and uh, definitely get that in the packet for you.
I figured I'd beat Lauren to the punch.
I don't know if this is even possible, Superintendent Stendig, but and, and let me know if this is asking too much. Uh, clearly, I'd love to know more information on the impact of the TIF, Medtronic's TIF. I don't know if that's.
Uh, actually, Director Hennickens has done some um, looking into that recently.
Oh, would you mind if?
Yeah. I don't know if you want to, if you're, if you were planning on including that in the packet or?
You can include it in the packet if you just like to.
Oh, absolutely. I can include it in the packet. I definitely have some information. I, I checked into that. Um, we anticipated uh, that is a question and, and it is something that's going to change in the, in the future here. It's still a few years off. Um, and it, it, it impacts some areas, but not other areas. So I do have some of that information. I'll definitely include that in the packet.
Thank you. That's awesome. So easy, easier said than, or just as easily said as done almost on that one.
Yeah, I'm definitely curious about that as well.
More questions? Just to reiterate for people watching, uh, it, it, the process will change many, many times. Uh, we'll do this update at least three times, correct? I mean, there's, it'll come up again and then we'll vote again, correct?
Yep, yep. So we, first we'll vote for the maximum and then um, I'll bring in the levy to you um, as an information item for certification and then we'll, we'll certify the levy. So.
This will, it's an annual process where these numbers flip flop all over the board. All right. Thank you, Director Hennickens.
Thank you.
We'll move on, well, we'll move on with you and we'll add Steve McAlpin of McAlpin Agency to talk about our insurance renewal.
All right, uh, just give me one second to get that presentation up. Thank you, Chair Severson, members of the board and Superintendent Stendig.
Thank you.
To, sorry, I'm just uh,
I envision him having like four screens.
I only, I only have three.
Super techie. I imagine it.
We have three. Uh, okay.
How did I know?
Okay, uh, so the next item is property and liability insurance renewal. Um, well, it, it technically, it's two computers and a screen. Um, property uh, Property and liability insurance renewal. So this evening I have Steve McAlpin with me and, and I'll give him a chance to introduce himself once he kind of. Well, Steve, why don't you just go ahead and introduce yourself right now before we get going?
Good, Brian. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Superintendent Stenbik. It's wonderful to see you all again and certainly a privilege to be back to present the property and casualty renewal. And sorry that it's a rough one-two punch to go from tax levy right into insurance chat. We'll do the best we can tonight.
All right. So our mission, Columbia Heights Public School is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values and with insurance, we're looking at excellence. Insurance is incredibly important and we want to, want to do the best we can with it. It's integrity, doing what's right. You can cut corners with insurance, but we really have to, we have to have it. It's important and we need to do it right. And innovation, you know, trying to find any way we can to put a package together that will, will be, be the best benefit and lowest cost that we can have. So this is informational item tonight and it'll be action at the September 22nd regular school board meeting. And this is October one renewal. So the insurance plans that this, there are the insurance that we're talking about today is the property and liability package, business and auto, or business auto and umbrella, overarching umbrella and the boiler and machinery and the cyber liability. And I'll, in, in a minute here, I'll let Steve kind of go into the, the details of some of that stuff. But just kind of wanted to step you through the process. So Steve and I started having conversations this summer and evaluating, you know, where we're at with insurance. And are there anything and how we want to proceed in this renewal process? And when we decided to test the market in some of these areas to see, see what, if we could find the best rate we could find, to find the best rate we could this year. It's been, it'd been a few years since we did that. So August, early September, we started receiving renewal from existing providers. And then in our existing providers in the bid for the RFP, put it to the market, when we put it to the market. September, like I said, is today, a school board informational presentation. And then, you know, that action prior to that October one renewal. So September 22nd at the end of the month. So I'll turn it over to Steve and, and, and really let him get into the, the dollars and how this kind of breaks down.
Thanks much, Brian. So as you can see by the premium summary on the, on the screen, the, you know, the premiums unfortunately are increasing this year. This was no huge surprise. We actually expected that, which is why Brian and I had decided to send applications to and request bids from every available insurance market in the state of Minnesota. Unfortunately, one large carrier did pull out of the market this past year, Continental Western Group. They've been around forever. And the other three carriers that we did submit applications to unfortunately declined to quote. So the premiums we're looking at are for liberty, renewal proposing with Liberty Mutual. And this will be our fifth year with Liberty. The cyber liability is actually with Chubb. And I believe we're in our fourth year, you know, with the Chubb Ace product as well. And, you know, our marketing results unfortunately were, were very similar on the cyber liability. We, we expected a, an increase that, you know, the cyber market is changing literally, you know, by the month. It's, it's just been a, it's a horrendous loss leader. And what you see in the paper is, it's, you know, there's some scary numbers and, you know, ransomware attacks, I believe are up over 700% this past year. So we're just seeing a tightening of the cyber market like never before. So that's, that's, yeah, that doesn't, doesn't bode well for our results because I, I received two declinations from two of the biggest carriers in the country for cyber. And the other two quotes that we did receive were actually coming in, they actually came in higher than the, you know, the increased quote from Chubb. And, yeah, you can see on the screen, the, you know, the primary factors for the premium increases. Number one is, you know, the school district's three-year loss ratio. You know, industry-wide property and liability rate increases for every industry. But of course, yeah, public and private schools are no different. They're, they're being hit pretty hard as well. And like I mentioned, obviously a very crazy and volatile cyber liability market. One positive, we, we did actually increase the blanket property limit by 8.6 million. So we've got that up at 179 million for the blanket property coverage for the buildings, you know, personal property, all the, all the district's assets. And this was, this basically comes from a recommendation out of an appraisal that was completed by Liberty Mutual back in early 2018. And that's the, that, that's the grim, the grim summary. You know, we, we did our best to, to test the market. It's been several years, probably, well, yeah, I think it's probably been four years since we took this to market. And obviously there's, there's a, just a limited number of carriers that are in this space with public school districts. So that's obviously the challenge that we face. And I wish I had better news for the board. I certainly understand this, this year is more challenging than ever with circumstances at hand. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that, that you have regarding the proposal.
Yeah. Thanks so much again for joining us, Steve. We missed seeing you in person, but thanks for all your hard work. Any questions about this? Laura?
Yeah, with the, the increase in our, of 8.6 million, is that getting us closer to where, because we were underinsured on our buildings? Or is that just kind of keeping us in the same, are we staying at the same level that we were short?
Yeah. Excellent question, Laura. So, yeah, three and a half years ago, the, the proposal from Liberty was roughly about 182 million. Obviously there's been some tremendous inflationary factors with construction, both of materials and labor over the past three and a half years. So, yeah, clearly we're, we're, we're in the ballpark, but certainly we're not. Yeah, we're, we're definitely not, you know, not at an adequate limit quite yet. One positive is, you know, we do have a little spread of risk, even though we've got four schools directly on 49th Ave. We've got North Park, you know, significant asset and, you know, what's at about a mile, a mile north. So we've got a little, little spread of risk, which obviously, you know, we never want to play the odds, but the probability of a total loss, you know, for five schools is, you know, certainly helps, helps us out, you know, gives us a little bit of wiggle room. But your question's right, you're right on point. We're probably still probably about 10 million short if we factor in inflation. So we, we do need to keep chipping away at that.
Okay. That's kind of what I thought. Thank you.
Did you see my hand raised?
Oh.
I raised my hand on the board.
Oh, there it is. I see it. Virtual hand raise, Lauren and her virtual hand.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. First of all, thank you both and thank you for, you know, sending this out and shopping this out. I think doing the due diligence of seeing who's out there and, and where we could go instead of just looking at the one renewal offer. I appreciate that very much. Just in general for the board too, I mean, this is something I do for my career. And we're seeing significant insurance premium increases just across the board. And a lot of that is the construction costs and inflation, as Steve said. And people at insurance companies getting out of the market and, you know, just overall costs increasing. Director Hennigens, you, on the slide that you had had up, you had had what the previous policy was and what the proposed renewal was. And I was trying to do the math and then you switched it on me quick. Was it about, are we looking like a 9% renewal roughly?
Uh, it's, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I was just going to say you're right, right on point, Lauren. It's 9% on the package, which includes all the property and liabilities, school leaders, errors and omissions. You know, the cyber, I hate to even say this out loud, but, you know, cyber's 280%.
Yeah. Yeah. And I mean, and that's just something you're seeing with, as you mentioned, the, just, yeah, I don't even want to talk about what cyber issues are. But 9% is not terrible in terms of what I'm seeing professionally in terms of renewal rates. So I appreciate that a lot. Director Hennigens, how does this compare to, to what we have budgeted for insurance?
Same question for me.
But it's definitely higher than, than what we anticipated, but not, not, not terribly that far off. We, we, I believe I factored in about a 6% increase. So just knowing that, we, we felt like it was going to be higher on the, on the preliminary, on the preliminary budget for the year. So we definitely increased it, but, so we'll have to, you know, factor that. And of course, as, as we go into the school year and the budget revision.
Thank you.
Steve, in your professional opinion, would you say that we should expect similar rise in subsequent years? Or is it just hard to know?
You know, I, I don't think so. Honestly, yeah, like I said, the number one factors are, are claims loss ratio. You know, with, with the, you know, with the claim becoming three, three and a half years old next year. And that's still, that's going to help us big time. Because we had, we had two significant long-term players in the public school market that declined to quote solely because of that issue. So that's going to bring some, some competition to the market. And the, the fact that we did bid it out, it was a little premature, but honestly, it, it did help us out because Liberty did sharpen their pencil. They knew we were shopping it. That, that definitely was a plus, which is why it's coming in a little, yeah, a little lower than Brian and I expected. And the cyber market, I, yeah, that, that, that's one that it's, I hate to say right now it's spiraling out of control. But I know the school board has got steps, you know, Brian's got, he's already got steps in place, you know, for the multi-factor authentication. That, that's a huge, huge factor. Quite honestly, there's several school districts that are running bare without cyber because they're not, they haven't been proactive enough with their, with their cyber plans. They're literally running bare and I've talked to a few renewal, renewal underwriters. And, yeah, they've never, never seen anything like it. So thankfully, you know, we've, we've making, you know, made some steps towards that MFA. And obviously we've got a ways to go, which is going to help us keep that cyber liability under control next year.
Laura has a question.
Yeah, as far as the cyber insurance, it's the, the, the cost to the district, if we were to suffer some sort of a, some sort of a, an attack, would be many, 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 many times what the policy is, is costing us. So it's, I expected it to be much higher than it actually is in, in other districts. It's, it's significantly higher.
All right. Well, thank you so much for joining us. We appreciate all the hard work you two did on this one.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for having me. And please note, we've got that wonderful new boiler well insured.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to action items. And our first action item is assurance of compliance with state and federal law prohibiting discrimination. And we will welcome Executive Director Namway and Human Resource Manager Elizabeth Rushi.
Good evening, Chair Stevenson, members of the school board and Superintendent Stenbik. Tonight, we are here seeking approval of the assurance of compliance with state and federal law prohibiting discrimination and to verify that the district is in compliance, which we are. Each school district must annually submit to the Commissioner of Education a statement of compliance with state and federal laws prohibiting discrimination and provide its designated supporting information to assure the statement. A copy of the statement and the Minnesota rule was provided to you in your packet. This is an annual action item brought to the school board for approval. Once approved, Superintendent Stenbik will sign the assurance of completion with state and federal law prohibiting discrimination and it will be submitted to the Commissioner of Education via the MDE user account system.
All right.
As I mentioned, we are in compliance and we are here seeking approval.
All right. So we have a motion for the approval of our assurance of compliance. Is that what, that's the motion? All right. So moved Molly.
Second.
Second. Lauren, discussion or questions? All right. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, motion carries. Thank you so much. That was pretty, pretty painless. We'll move on to the superintendent's goals, which says I'm the presenter. I thank you for, you know, offering me that much, but I think we'd all much rather hear from you.
And it over.
Yeah.
Chair Stevenson, members of the board, as we discussed, discussed at a previous meeting, my annual goals align to the Minnesota School Board Association rubric for superintendent evaluation. And for the 2021, 22 school year, the first of two goals aligns to standard three, communication and community relationships. And the second goal aligns to standard seven, student support. The board will conduct a mid-year evaluation in November or December and an end of the year evaluation in June. And so this evening I'm seeking board approval of the goals for 2021, 22 school year.
All right. Motion to approve those goals.
So moved.
Mary?
Second.
Second? All right. Hold on. Any discussion on that? For those of you watching at home, we talked about these goals. We read through them at great length at our last work study. So they're not just that vague, but. There are some rubrics and we have some ways of evaluating. So if you're watching at home going, well, that's vague, I assure you they're not. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, motion carries. We will move on to board policy, second reading. And the, we're asking for approval of the policies, 428 remote work from home, 809 COVID-19 face covering policy. And these policy items appeared on a August 28th, 2021 meeting for review. So we're asking again for approval at tonight's meeting. Can I get a motion for that one?
So moved.
Laura? Second?
Second. Mary?
Mary, thanks. Any discussion on that?
I'm assuming no comments from anybody in the public during the public conference.
Good question. That was a good one to ask. Further discussion? All right. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right, that motion carries also. And we'll move on to board topics. I have a couple here. The first one, I would just like to recommend we add email address to the blue cards, given our conversations earlier. I'm getting a massive head shake from Dawn. She's probably already had us on a note somewhere, is my guess. Yep, she does. She had us beat to the punch on that one. All right. Anybody else have a reason we shouldn't ask for unintended consequence on that one?
I think that's just an administrative detail. It makes sense.
Sounds good. All right. And then I do have a question about updating on our listening session. I didn't, are we supposed to present, is this the meeting where we were supposed to have an update on our listening session? We did as a board?
That's right.
I think last time we added as, had it as an agenda item.
Did we? I don't remember that.
Yeah.
Oh, we did, we did. We can do it. I can do it now. There's nothing in particular to say, so if I was going to give a summation of it, we didn't have any specific. There's nothing in particular to say, so if I was going to give a summation of it, we didn't have any specific, as I recall, it was me and Laura, correct? It was a very small group, just to report back. We had one parent there right away and an interpreter, and then a couple of parents logged on. And we did kind of do a formal presentation, like what is a board? What is the function of a board? And the one parent was super appreciative of that. And it was fun to actually practice, like saying it. I got to say it. Laura read through our newest kind of COVID updates, and then once again, did those later as a couple more parents logged in. I think we might have passed one information item onto you, as I recall. But other than that, there's nothing significant to report as an outcome of that time. Was that helpful? The parent engagement was good for the parents who were there, but it was a small number of parents. And it could have been timing, right before the beginning of the school year. Could have been a lot of things. Other things that you would add?
I know, it would, I was, I was expecting there to be a lot of, you know, a lot more people interested, mainly because of the going back to school, the COVID, the mask policies. You saw, you know, what was going on in other districts. So I guess for my first one, I was glad that it was very, very conversational. I think we had a lot of conversation, you know, about various different aspects. And it was, it was really, really a nice experience, but nothing really super substantial that we haven't really discussed.
Is that a sufficient summary, Dawn?
And then, as long as I'm on a roll, the board membership appointment process, as we read briefly, ever so briefly, in the consent agenda, there it is. Hala Samrai did resign from our board. She expressed gratitude for her time and thanks for being a part of this board. Can we share, is it okay if we share her reason? Is that? No? Okay, let's just ignore it. Pretend I never said that. But we're thankful for her service on the board. I am personally, I guess, thankful for her service on the board, and I will miss her presence on the board. But having said that, Dawn did contact MSBA for us and did a lot of the legwork on this. So thanks again to Dawn, who we referenced. Dawn is just off the camera, right behind Mary. You can't see her, but she does a lot of work for us. And we're really thankful for all her help. She contacted MSBA. We do not need to hold a special election on this one because we are within 90 days of this year's election. It would appear on next year's ballot. Since that was the end of Hala's term, this will be an appointment for the remainder of this, of this term. So it would be from the date we appoint through the end of the next calendar year.
Does that make sense?
If you had an opportunity to look at your board packet, Dawn and Xena sent us this fabulous, how this happened in 2009. So a similar circumstance happened in 2009. For that process, the board then created a application process. I recommend and would love to hear feedback from all of you. We also pursue an application process. We don't have to. We can just make an appointment. We can just say that's the person. I'm personally more comfortable, as I assume most people are, with an application process. Are people?
Application.
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 Application?
Yeah, I would prefer, I'd like to know who's interested.
Yeah, I'd like to, sort of like the student board member. Let's, let's see who's out there and hear from them. The questions are listed here. If you had an opportunity, I read through them. I think seven questions is sufficient. I asked Dawn if we could do this, also an e-version, so it'd be contactless, paperless version. People could submit via perhaps a Google form of some kind. Are you, are people comfortable with the questions? Did you want to augment questions, switch them out?
I'm actually wondering if, like, following our, our practice with the student school board members, if we could do it as a blind, a blind application, too. I mean, we would have to certainly have, you know, you have to be, you know, you have to live within our school district, you know, there are going to be some.
I think I'm uncomfortable, it's a public office. And they're representing the city of Columbia Heights. I, I would personally be uncomfortable.
I would, I would too.
Selecting someone for public office blindly.
Well, I mean, as far as, yeah, I just.
I mean, we can talk about it. We can explore, but I'm giving my personal opinion. Everybody else is welcome to share what they think.
I agree. I really would circle with a blind, or appointing someone to something like this, not knowing.
Oh, no, I meant as far, as far as the initial, like, who we would want to actually interview to start it out as a blind process. Is that, that's actually what I meant.
Do we do interviews, or is it just?
It's part of the process.
I'm sorry.
Interviews conducted. So the process, this is the 2009 calendar, so we'd have to augment the dates to reflect our current situation. But it says 2024, or September 24, posting local papers, October 2, applications are due to Dawn, the board secretary. October 9, so whatever, the subsequent Friday, all the applications would be in a board packet, would be printed in for our board packet. October 3, so we would all pre-read. It would be a heavy reading weekend. And then we would go have, review the applications and determine questions at a special call meeting. So we'd have a special call meeting where we would do that. Notification of applications. Dawn, could you explain that step a little bit?
You notify the candidates that you apply to.
Oh, great. And then the interviews are conducted that following week, the following day. And then she gives a two-day window for interviews. So perhaps based on people's availability or our availability, and then an appointment a week later at the last school board meeting in October. We, what we learned, surprisingly, I have to admit, is there's no deadline for us to choose a new board member. I feel like that, it leaves a lot of latitude for boards. I'm personally eager to get it filled, but I also don't want to do it so quickly that we leave people out or make a rash decision. So Laura, we can go back to the, Laura suggested a blind application, or at least to get to the interviews. How are people feeling about that?
I think when you have an interview process, it almost negates the blind application process.
Because we would know their name.
Right. I mean, I guess it depends on how you're weeding people out, if you will. I, I think, to me, I hope that we have several people apply, you know, are interested in this position. And I would hope that as a board, we would consider every applicant without bias and make sure that we're, you know, selecting someone who represents our community and the, and the opinions and the values of our community, which may be the same or different from our own here on the board. Recognizing that this is typically an elected position, that is elected by members of our community, by the constituents, by the taxpayers in, in our district. And we have now an obligation to select somebody that is representative of, of the folks. And so I think it's, you know, if, again, if the process involves interviews to select the final candidate, I'm not sure we need to do a blind application process. I hear what you're saying, though.
Yeah, I hear the heart of what you're saying. I've given this a lot of thought, and I'm just trying to figure out how in the world can we make this as wide open as possible, you know? Because when we're actually going to be selecting somebody who is going to be making decisions with us to make sure that it's the best for the community and not necessarily the best for the board, if that makes any sense.
I, I 100% agree. And I, you know, and I was even thinking, as I was reading through the questions and looking at, you know, geographically, where each one of us lives within Columbia Heights, Hilltop, and Fridley. Or, you know, and I know that we don't have districts in terms of our, you know, we're just generally elected. But, you know, there's just things that, that I think we all need to, we need to take into consideration as we, as we move the board forward. So yes, I agree. We need to do what's best for our community, for our students. And, and that may be, you know, someone who might not.
Agree with us.
Correct.
Actually, one, one other thing, too. We are going to be having our retreat coming up here. I would actually like to take a look at maybe this application also through an equity lens.
Yeah, when is, I'm trying to.
It's coming up real fast.
So it's one week from today, right?
Yeah.
To, this is a, Dawn told me this is something we need to, obviously need to discuss in an open meeting. We can't have an open meeting, we can't discuss this at our board training time, I don't think, because it's a board topic. Does that make sense? So we can only discuss things related to equity that aren't like board decision-making. So we can learn about equity, but we can't say at that, discuss a policy amongst each other. Does that make sense? Like.
So we can't discuss this.
Doctor Mohammed could tell us, here's a policy you might look at and explain, blah, 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 but we can't have a discussion around that because then we'd be.
We can't do board business.
Yeah, that, that's true. I'm just thinking, well, because it's a policy.
I think what we can do is, in your own head, think about that.
It's, well, it's an application.
Right. So we could adjust.
Not necessarily even a policy. It's just an application.
It's still board business.
It's still board business. We can't do, we can't do board business at our training. And so we, what we could do is table this discussion and tell the meeting subsequent to that, which would be September 28. It would put this timeline back a little bit, but if that's what it means to make, to put an equity lens on this, I'm, I'm totally for that. We'd have to take in what Doctor Mohammed's saying, look at this individually, and then come back together and have a discussion about it on the 28th. Would that, would that make people feel more comfortable with?
Yes.
Superintendent Senvik, any thoughts on this?
My thought is that perhaps I would reach out to Doctor Mohammed and inform him of that this is a process on board members' minds.
Okay.
So that he could maybe provide, be prepared to provide us with some resources or something like that. I mean, obviously, the training itself isn't about this topic, but.
It's about equity within our schools and on our board, our vision and values. So.
But it might be helpful.
We can't receive, we can't have a dialogue about it. We can, we can receive training, correct, Dawn, from him on equity, but we cannot have a discussion surrounding.
No board business.
No board business. And just as a side note, now remember, our quorum now is three. So if you're having conversations, your limit is one person, because you could, like, before we could have two conversations, because our quorum was four, now it's one. Does that make sense? Yeah. Table it till the 28th, then we'll make the timeline on the 28th? Or do we want to?
I mean, I'm okay with that, but I, I feel confident in all of us being at that point that I think we could do this. I think we all, even just this conversation, understand and respect our community and what people bring to this. And so I think, I hear you and I appreciate it. It's not that I don't, but I just, I think that we could, I think that we're already there. And I don't know that we need to wait two more weeks to do that. But that's just, again, that's just where I'm at. I agree with Molly on that, yeah. And I'm, I'm anxious, I want to make sure that we, we're thoughtful in our choices and, in all of those things, and who, who we are going to have represent the community on the board with us. And I'm also, you know, the, the community deserves to have. I feel like, let me restart that. I believe that the community really is entitled to have us be thoughtful in this choice and also timely, because having an open seat doesn't serve the community either. And so I, I'm fine with, I think we can make a timeline decision. I don't think we need to wait two weeks. So I think maybe what we look at here, just kind of, what I'm hearing, is we have the application that we've used in the past, and we can use that again. We can get that out, but I still think that even perhaps we, you know, if we feel value in that, still let Doctor Mohammed know kind of what's happening with our board dynamics since the last time we met and kind of knowing what, what, again, what we're looking for. We are, as I think Molly said, we are all committed to this. We're, we're bought in, we, to, to doing what we're doing for the, for the, from, from, I hate to continue to use the equity lens, but we're committed to that. It's a board goal, and we've continued to expand on that. And I think, I think there's value in still having kind of some, maybe training or incorporating that into some of what we're doing next week with Doctor Mohammed while not necessarily stopping the process at this point either.
What if our discussion revolved around the interview process, potentially? Or not a discussion, but like, we could ask for feedback. We could ask, Xena, to ask him for feedback on, maybe even like recommendations he would have for looking into like, how to frame equity. I mean, I think, I think we can make a wise choice here. I just want to be respectful of. All right, so are you comfortable if we stay on, so the timeline would be, we would post, hold on, let me open my calendar. Looks like we would post, is September 24 still a valid date to post it, or?
I can redo those and put those in.
Okay, put it, put it in the board packet. And because, we don't need to vote on this, we just need to agree on this. Like, are you guys, are you all okay with Dawn augmenting the dates to reflect 2021?
I'll also give a little bit more time for the, for the, the public to be aware that there is an opening as well.
Yep.
You know, I'm, I'm very conscious of not wanting to, to rush on a decision like this. Because we're directly elected by our community.
Dawn, would the application go live on that 24th, or would it just go live at any point?
We could do either. The 24th would be, well, I have to look at the dates, but I mean, whatever date, we can publish it in the local paper, whatever it's a Thursday. So whatever that Thursday would be.
That's when you would recommend we make that application go live?
Yep. You have to have it done by, at least by then, because then it'll be in the newspaper.
Got it, okay.
We could do it before that, if you'd like.
So open up the application whenever. We won't see any of the, we won't know when they turn it in. Regardless, it'll all come to us at the same time. That gives, we just need to get the word out to talk to different community groups that there's an open.
So I, I know that we have to post in the papers. That's our official communication. And is there also the ability for the communications department to post social media and kind of, you know, expand on that? Because I do want to look at different avenues of.
Stunkel's giving a thumbs up.
Are we getting a thumbs up? Awesome. Thank you. Different avenues to make sure that, you know, we're, we're getting the word out. I don't, I don't want this to be a, ooh, there's a board opening, but it's a secret, and let's pick, you know, Bob, because we all like Bob. I mean, I, we need to get this out there. We need to be very public and very deliberate about getting this out to as many people in our community as possible and hoping that as many folks who are interested apply. And I think on that note, I would prefer that the application doesn't go live until it's published or until the communication about it starts going out. I just, I think it would almost feel better and more clean rather than having it sit there for, you know, people to access that know about it for 10 days before. It just, to me, even though.
Like do extra prep or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that it all comes to us at the same time, but just for, like, to have it clean.
So we'll have Dawn coordinate with, with Director Stunkel about dates and then choose a date where, once we've made it a public announcement, whether it's via our social media or the newspaper, wherever, whenever we first announce it.
I think it needs to go, whatever day it's going to be published in the newspaper, that's the date. And then we can continue, we can, from there.
From there, and then our.
That can be shared.
According to this. That's our official communication, so it's got to get posted in the paper.
So September's 31 days.
Thirty.
Is it 30?
Did you just do the knuckle?
I did the knuckle thing and did it wrong. It's 30 days.
Thirty, okay. The knuckle thing failed you.
30 days, so it looks like that's about a week that they're open. Do we want to extend that timeline? Or is a week a long enough time to apply? Do we want to extend that timeline, or is a week a long enough time to apply?
To get it out and then also apply? I don't think so. I don't know. It just feels like that's not enough time.
I think that if I'm thinking as a community member and was thinking, yeah, I agree. If someone's out of the office, or someone's away for five days, and then they find, like, there's lots of reasons. I think two weeks would be more appropriate.
Can we extend that time window between? All right, great, let's extend it out, which would mean we'll be probably appoint, doing the appointment in the first meeting in November. Based on that, we'll push it back a meeting to keep the time scale with interviews and applications. We will have to have a special called meeting to discuss the applications. I would assume that would be like a work session type?
Yep.
And that would be in October, right?
That would be at some point in mid to late October, based on if I bump this up a week. It could be before a regular board meeting or something like that, or after.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going to be like that first week of November and whatnot.
All right, did we give you everything you need to know? Clear as mud over there?
Yes.
Clear as mud.
All right, one comment.
Yeah.
I think just while we're on the topic, I know you had said something, but if, if Hala's listening or watching this later, I, I also want to just thank her for her service and for the perspective that she brought to our board. I learned a lot from her and, and really valued the, the, again, the perspective I think that she, she wrought to our team. So I just wanted to wish her, wish her well. It's not something that we can, couldn't, couldn't all come together privately and, and have, have a conversation. So I just wanted to thank her for her service.
Yeah, agree. Her unique perspective as an educator was helpful to me on many occasions, and she was my first buddy for my first national school board convention. So that was fun to get to know her in that way, so.
She will definitely be missed. I'm sad that I didn't get to serve with her very long, and the way that I was able to serve with her was mostly remote. So her, she leaves a very, very big set of shoes to fill, I think, for whoever's coming in. So I'm grateful for her service.
And I'm not going to repeat everything that was said, but obviously, we all appreciate it. Hala, and we all wish her well. I just, I also just want to acknowledge that she stepped into this board at a really critical time and a very hard time, and so I want to acknowledge that and thank her for that as well.
I'm, I'm really going to miss Hala. Yeah, she, she didn't, wasn't able to inform me individually, so she tried to send me a text, and I said, "You are not texting me something like this." But I'm really happy for, you know, the opportunity that she has right now. You know, it's good for her and her family, and, but it just, it just, I don't want to lose, I didn't want to lose her. She was just really just an amazing, she always had just a slightly different way of looking at things. To, to be able to, the way that she was able to communicate, maybe just a slightly different point of view, was so incredibly helpful. And Hala, if you happen to be listening, we're really going to miss you, and thank you so much for your service. And, and again, coming in under some of the roughest times we had in this district and, and helping us get through it was, was, you were really awesome to work with. Thank you.
All right, any other board topics? All right, hearing none, we'll adjourn this meeting at 8:49.